Come to order our call, this county commission open for business.
Thank you, Sheriff. First, we'd like to start with our invocation. If you'll stand with me, please. We have Mr. Stephen Lee, Lead Pastor, the First Methodist Church in Manchester.
Ladies and gentlemen, may we bear our heads for a word of prayer. Almighty God, Neverlasting Father, our prayer is that you would guide our honorable and elected mayor and commissioners of Coffey County, their counselors, and all others who have been entrusted by you with the power of representative leadership for the rendering of true service to the people. Drive from us all cynicism and selflessness and corruption, and grant in your mercy just and honest government. Give us grace to live in unity and peace, and we ask your blessing upon this county, our state, and our nation with wise leadership and abiding holiness through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And we now have our most special guest probably ever here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and that is Little Miss Coffey County People's Choice, Ms. Holly Sloan Jones.
Would you all please face the flag and put your hand over your heart?
Loud and proud. I pledge to a nine-state America, to the import, you stand one nation under God, for peaceful and liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and congratulations on being crowned Little Miss Coffey County People's Now we're ready for a roll call, please. We have, I'm showing six. Yes, Commissioner Duncan is here, so we do have seventeen present. Yes, we're waiting. Seventeen present, we are recorded properly, thank you. Next item is to approve tonight's agenda. You have it before us. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I've got a problem.
Okay, we need to get a motion and a second on it first, please. We have a motion, we have a second, it's properly before us, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I would like to make a motion and we pull and let it see from the agenda because we had another discussion about it and it took too quick. I don't have any information to vote on.
You've heard, is that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that motion for discussion?
I have an amendment to the motion.
It would be an amendment to the motion, correct. Commissioner Miller, you have a second on that? Okay. It is before us, properly seconded, open for discussion. Commissioner Brown.
I just don't know what I can vote on because I don't know anything about it. I've had no discussion or information about this, so I just, I just don't think I can vote. Nothing should go unless they've got information.
Okay, any additional discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
This was approved through committee, correct?
They dissolved themselves, and then it was approved through committee, yes, to come forward, through our committee, yes.
Okay, and I'm hoping when this item comes up, if it stays on the agenda, that somebody can explain it to the body. Would that be safe to assume that?
Yes, it would, and then. Commissioner Hobbs?
So at that committee meeting, were all the members present?
The best of my knowledge, no.
What was the vote?
I'll leave that to the chairman, Stubblefield.
The vote, the vote was three to zero.
How many weren't there?
Any additional discussion for us? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote on the amendment to the amending the budget. All those in favor? Oh, Commissioner Hunt, sorry, sir.
We are voting just on his amendment, correct?
Correct.
Remove eleven C.
To remove eleven C from the agenda, yes.
And yes would be to remove, no would be not.
To keep it on there until further discussion later in the night, correct. Any further discussion?
If you explain that, yes or no.
The motion that you suggested is the motion we're voting on. A yes vote would be to remove it from the agenda, a no vote would keep it on the agenda and to be talked about later. Any additional clarification or discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of removing eleven C from the agenda, vote, signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, we will remove it from the agenda. And I guess, Mr. Parliamentarian, that will automatically go to next month's or the next meeting, or just be a new order of business next time? Okay. Correct. Now we're back to the original motion, which is to approve the agenda. Commissioner Hunt?
I need to see an amend option.
Okay.
All I see is yes, no, or abstain. We can still amend, correct?
Correct, yes, we can still amend this motion. We can still amend the agenda, yes. They're working on it.
I need to change the, I got this. Resolution twenty, twenty twenty-three, nineteen reads Duck River Bridge. I'd like to change that to Old Stone Fort Bridge Preservation Resolution.
Preservation Resolution. You've heard the motion to change eleven H from Duck River Bridge Resolution to Old Stone Fort Preservation, Bridge Preservation Resolution. Do we have a motion and a second?
I can make a motion.
Okay, it's properly seconded. Motion properly seconded. Do we have any discussion?
One needed on here.
Okay, I'm waiting. Did you push your motion, Hutton? Commissioner Hunt?
All I see is yes or no or abstain.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote simply to change the name to Old Stone Fort Bridge Preservation Resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Vote no.
Sixteen yes, one no.
Sixteen, one. Thank you. Motion carries to change the name. Now we are back on, now we are back on approving the agenda itself. We need a, we have an original motion and a second to approve the agenda. Yes, Commissioner Hobbs, discussion?
By removing eleven C, that removes everything under C, right? One, two, and the whole item's removed, correct?
Mr. Parliamentarian, would that, in the parliamentarian's terms, yes, sir, it does. We're, but we're on approving the agenda now. We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote on tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Now we're on number six, which is public comments, and I have a sign-up sheet here, and I'll begin with that, and we'll have twenty minutes total. We've got a couple of timekeepers, two minutes maximum per person. Dr. Jeff Keel, you're recognized.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jeff Keel. I'm a former county commissioner and a current ambulance authority member. I'd like to thank you guys for letting me have the opportunity to speak today. The Coffey County Ambulance Authority was created in nineteen seventy-two as an independent oversight entity for our EMS service. For fifty years, it has effectively and efficiently managed EMS with little drama or conflict. At the November of twenty twenty-two ambulance authority meeting, Chairman Stubblefield brought forth discussion on dissolving the authority and switching it to a committee. Dr. Jay Trussler and I argued strongly for us to remain in authority, and as there were no strong arguments made in favor of dissolving the authority, the discussion died without a motion. We opted to stay in authority. On the afternoon of our scheduled August meeting last month, the meeting was canceled last minute and rescheduled for the following week. Neither Dr. Trussler nor I were available to attend this meeting. Commissioner Frank Watkins amended the agenda at the meeting to add a discussion to dissolve the authority. Commissioner Watkins then made a motion to dissolve the authority. It was seconded by Missy D. Ford, and it passed three to nothing with no, apparently no discussion. If you look back at the minutes, there's no mention of any discussion, it was just a straight pass. If you do the math, that's forty percent of the authority was absent. In my view, the circumstances of this vote are suspect and make me wonder about ulterior motives and hidden agendas. The resolution to dissolve was then rammed through legislative committee and put on this commission's agenda in less than a month. I'm asking this commission to vote no on dissolving the ambulance authority to allow more time for research, debate, and discussion. I think you guys need to figure out what, what's, you don't buy a pig in a poach. Let's figure out what's going on here before we get rid of something. Just remember the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Dr. Keel. Our next speaker is Dr. Jay Trussler. Sir, you have up to two minutes.
As a point of order, this item's been removed from the agenda, so it should no longer be public comment period regarding it.
Well, I believe that the chair's gonna rule that the public can comment on anything that is germane to the activities of this commission. However, it is worth noting that there'll be no activity on this tonight, so there'll, there may not be a reason to speak anymore, but if you choose to speak, I believe if it's an issue germane to this commission and activities of this commission, it will be valid to speak. Dr. Trussler?
Nancy Pelosi said we gotta pass a bill to find out what's in it. You want to find out the motives of Frank Watkins, Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Stubblefield, and Commissioner D. Ford, go ahead, dissolve the ambulance authority, and then you'll find out what's gonna happen, okay? I don't know what's gonna happen, but the way I am, come to the meeting, the ambulance authority. If there's a problem with the way the ambulance functioning, ask me. Sit down with us, tell us the direction you want to see ahead, I will listen to you, and we'll come to an agreement together to do what's best for this community. It's what I've done for ten years. I didn't even know it was a paid job for the first three years, till someone said, wait, you're not getting paid for this? The sixty-five dollars a meeting? I thought it was volunteer. Then I used the money and bought the medic's go bags. So I have an altruistic heart when it comes to this. I want to make sure that my parents, when they dial down one-one, an ambulance shows up at their house as quickly as possible and gets them to the next closest appropriate facility as quickly as possible. And that's where my heart's been. And when someone, Commissioner Watkins, comes in on a last-minute schedule change that I wasn't notified about until three hours before the meeting by a medic, not Chairman, not Chairman Stubblefield, not Commissioner D. Ford, who said, you know, I was pressured into voting that way. Well, you don't need to be on the commission if you're gonna be pressured by either one of these two, okay? I'm not pressured by anybody. I couldn't get elected to elected office. I'm here because I try to do what's right for the community, okay? And this is being ramrodded. You want to find out what the agenda is? Dissolve the ambulance authority and see, because you will find out. And you might not like the results, and if you give all the power to one individual, that's okay. Maybe that individual does what you want, but the next individual that sits in that seat up there, maybe they don't. And the recourse this commission will have will be none, because the power will sit with one instead of a group of people. I'm available for questions, but to run it through a last minute when I wasn't there and was notified at the last minute of a meeting?
Thank you, doctor.
There was a reason for that. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. And it is worth noting that should this ever occur in the future, that would be a five-member standing committee called the Public Safety Committee that would oversee the ambulance service, not one individual. Next up is Kristy Chilton. You're welcome to speak, ma'am, for up to two minutes.
I'll try very hard to keep it at two minutes. This is in reference to saving the Old Stone Fort Bridge, okay? So I'm just gonna read real quick what I read at the city meeting last week, okay? We have formed a save the, an Old Stone Fort Save the Bridge Friends Group, okay? I'm a member of this group. We have accumulated over two thousand five hundred members working to stop the proposed removal of the historic landmark bridge and the construction of a five million dollar replacement one-lane bridge. We are adamantly opposed to the removal of this historic beautiful bridge and the rest of this project. A beautifully designed RV dedicated entrance has been built to access the campground off of Country Club Drive. The campers love it, do not want to access the campground on a one-lane bridge. T.DOT and T.DEC have stated that one of the reasons they now seek to close that expensive new entrance, remove the historic bridge, and spend five million dollars on a new one-lane bridge is because the residents of Country Club Estates want that. This has been proven to be totally untrue. I've got names and addresses and signatures to back this up from Country Club Drive. It's about thirty percent of the homes in there. There's a, there was a hundred homes, and of the twenty-eight that I visited, all but one gentleman were against the removal of this historic bridge and the construction of a five million dollar replacement. All were resolute and felt strongly enough to put their signatures on this survey. One can extrapolate that to an overwhelming majority.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to ask you to step down, please. Your two minutes is up, and we'll have to make room for another speaker.
Okay.
I do feel, though, in my spot, I do feel in my spider senses that there's a good warm breeze blowing to assist this resolution tonight. I don't, that's just, I can never promise anything until it happens, but I believe most of this commission is, is favorable, but that's just, that's me talking only. Next person up is Michael Hopkins. You have two minutes, if you'd like to speak, please. Pass? Yes, sir. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Do we have, that's all we have on the sign-up list, but is there anybody else that would like to speak, address the commission this evening on any topic germane to Coffey County and the role of the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on past public comments to review and approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which are attached. And I entertain a motion and a second there. We have a motion, properly seconded. Do we have any discussion on approval of the last minutes? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of approving the last minutes of the Coffey County Commission signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Next is number seven, review and approval of, excuse me, number eight, resolutions of memorials, sympathy, proclamations, and commendations, which we have none. Next is elections, appointments, and confirmations, which we do every September. First will be the commission chair vote, and I need to hand the chair to Commissioner Pro Tem Hollensworth, or Mayor Pro Tem Hollensworth, to conduct the commission chair vote, sir.
Okay, I guess we'll go with the, the rule will be next in line to have that, so the rule, who, would be back to?
We're voting on the chair first, and then we'll vote on the pro tem.
Okay. We need a nomination for, for the nomination for a rule. Chair. Just for the chair, excuse me, the chair. Do we have any?
I make a nomination, Judd Matheny.
Okay. Judd Matheny has a nomination. Do we have a second on that? Missy D. Ford seconds it. All in favor?
Okay. Let's make sure it's done right. If you'll just ask for a vote, please.
Okay. Let's lock in your votes. That will be, go ahead and vote now, please. Okay, we have, we have sixteen yes and one no.
Sixteen, one. Motion carries. Parliamentarian says that sound, and thank you, sir. The next vote will be for the commission pro tempore of the commission, and I believe it is a rural member this time that is, is up for the job for the next year, so I will entertain motions for nominate, nominations for a rural member for pro tem.
I'd like to nominate Dennis Hunt.
Dennis Hunt's been nominated. Do we have a second? We have seconded by Jackie Duncan. Do we have any additional nominations? Seeing none, I rule, do we have a motion nomination cease? Motion properly seconded, nominations have ceased, so by acclamation, we have Mr. Hunt, but I still, as pro tem, but I still would require a vote. All those in favor of Chairman Hunt becoming the pro tem signify by saying voting aye, and those opposed, vote no.
So my name's just seconded, or, okay, waiting, just then. Fourteen yes, two no.
Motion carries, fourteen, two, and the parliamentarian has asked to be recognized.
On nominations, technically, you don't have to have a second for nomination. The floor will be open for nominations. Nominate one person, two people, however many you want to nominate. Then, if it's only one person, or however many, there needs to be a motion made for nominations to cease. That requires a second. Now, if it's just one person, then you can tie all that together. I move that nomination cease and this person be voted with this vote, and that one vote would, would take care of that. But technically, you don't have to have a second for nominations, but each time you're nominating someone, you do need a motion that nomination cease, and then you vote on however many people that were nominated. Thank you.
And from there, we'd whittle them down if we had to, but since we only had one in each category, we're okay per your opinion. Thank you. The next is committee assignments, and nine, C.I., is to renew current members to their current committees. No one has approached me to be asked to be moved from any committees, removed from any committees, so I'm putting forward the exact same committee list that we've had for the last year for this next fiscal year, and so I would like a, I would entertain a motion and a second to reaffirm the entire committee list. Of course, it's open for any kind of discussion. We do have a motion, we do have a second, and it's open for any discussion, should anybody have any. Seeing none, are we prepared to vote on the entire slate just to renew our committee We are prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no.
Fifteen yes.
Fifteen, two, thank you. I believe it's run very smooth. I believe we have the proper people in place at the time to conduct the business that we have. My door is always open for anyone that would like to be removed from a committee or would like to serve on a additional committee in the future so that I can begin to put that process in place, and that we can have that as a private conversation if we need to. Unfinished business, Health Department Construction Status. I'll start by saying there's not been much. Commissioner Hunt, would you like to?
I did visit with Stephanie in purchasing, and I think the RFQ for architectural firms is nearing completion, and we should be hearing something regarding that rather quickly.
Yes, once again, the federal government has required us, after the state gave us the okay to go back, to have to go back and advertise in the federal GoDBE website and redo how we would choose a professional service, for the most part, for that, and it's knocked us back a few months, but we're still moving. Next, committee vacancy appointments, which we have none. Next is new business. We have personnel manual approvals. A.I. is administrative closing policy. We have weather-related policy. Do we have a motion and a second on that policy? We have a motion, it's properly seconded. Commissioner Hirschman, would you like to make any comments about this change?
Well, this allow us to, to be able to close this facility on your, on your control and allow ones that are not required to be on, on call, which would be that your Sheriff's Department, your EMS, and others that are, that are just part of the structure that we have to have operating. So it allows him to make that call to close this facility, to avoid lawsuits for, for anybody slipping and falling, so that's really why we've done this, and this gives us a direction to go off of.
Thank you. We need that direction and for the public's benefit. We've only had to do this one time in the last year, and, and I consulted with all the department heads and elected officials prior to doing that, just to see how it was impacting them individually before we made that decision, and I'll continue to do that in the future unless it's something very exigent. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the policy? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is our, our employee evaluation process. We're having some more discussions about that. We're gonna defer it until November for Commissioner Morris to continue to visit that, and I believe we're all in favor of an employee evaluation process, and we're getting closer to that. Next is budget approvals. We have five budget amendments, starting with eleven B I. We have a motion and a second on eleven B I. This is, Ms. Maryanna, would you like to describe what this one does? I can barely see the printing. It is a school fund, but just... We have a motion. Properly seconded. Go ahead, ma'am.
This one is for the general purpose school fund. It is receipt of grant funds. This was approved by Budget and Finance on August 24th, 2023.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. Next item is eleven B I I. We could have a motion and a second, and this is a capital outlay, building improvements. Motion second, property force.
This one, one forty-one, twenty twenty-four-two, was for the purchase of fire alarm at the Coffey County High School. This also was approved by Budget and Finance on August 24th.
Correct. Very big ticket item, big school, though, a lot of technology. You've heard the explanation. Do we have any additional discussion? This is a school board budget amendment. Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Oh, we do have a motion and a second, I'm sorry.
Seventeen yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Third one is eleven B I I I, and budget amendment. Could we have a motion and a second for discussion, please?
This one is number one oh one, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion and a second. Now, sorry. Thank you, ma'am.
General Fund one oh one, twenty twenty-four zero one. This is a transfer between land and library for some personnel costs and other supplies, and also for the Manchester Library. It was approved by Budget and Finance on July 27th.
You've heard the explanation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. Next is eleven B I V four. Budget amendment. Could we have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second for discussion. Ms. Maryanna, would you explain it, please?
This is Capital Projects, one seventy-one, twenty twenty-four-two. These are projects that were not, they were already approved in the last fiscal year, but they were not completed yet, so I've just moved the money from one year to the next to get those completed. It's approved by Budget and Finance on August 24th.
Thank you. You have heard the explanation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. Final budget amendment is eleven B five. We have a motion, we have a second, it's properly before us. Ms. Maryanna, would you please give us an explanation?
This is General Fund one oh one, twenty twenty-four-three. This is a reduction in the county clerk's office of, excuse me, office of deputies, and a return to unassigned fund balance of thirty-three thousand one seventeen. It was approved by Budget and Finance on August 24th.
Thank you. You've, we have a motion and a second. You've heard the explanation. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hodge.
Help my understanding of that report, the figures there at the bottom where it says less budget amendment, and that math, should that be subtracted from the ninety-four sixty-seven three seventy-seven instead of added?
No, it's being pulled back into the general fund, so it should...
That's fine, thank you. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. Eleven C one-two has been tabled, or has been struck out. Eleven D is a grant vote for the elections office. It's included in your packet. It is for state computer grant. We have a motion and a second for discussion. We have a motion, it's properly seconded. Do we have any discussion on this grant? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you, ma'am. Next item is eleven C, which is the approval of our notaries. It's included in your packet. We have a motion, and would entertain a second for discussion. We have a motion and a second properly before us. Do we have any discussion on our notary list? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. The next is eleven F, which is a purchasing resolution. Resolution two oh two three dash eighteen is a TCAT vote. For those of you that don't know, very quickly, and I'll entertain a motion in a second for this also. Okay, we have a motion, seconds properly before us. I'll give a brief explanation. The county had granted seven point two-five acres roughly to Tennessee Board of Regents to create a Tennessee College of Applied Technology in our joint industrial park. Since that time, our new Coffey County I-24 industrial park, eighteen hundred acres, is being commissioned by the state. TCAT has agreed in a very excited way to move to a much larger piece of land there, larger campus, and we will be providing them about twenty acres, or the state will at that time. So this resolution will codify us changing from promising them that seven point two-five acres to moving out to the joint park in the future, thus leaving that seven point two-five acres open for additional businesses like MDS to potentially expand, which is something we're working on. So we have a motion and a second, it's properly before us. We're open for discussion, and Commissioner Hollensworth.
Yes, sir. I want to also add that in that resolution, that settled side Lot 30 in the joint industrial park, so if something falls through, that they can still have a place to call home at Lot 30.
Good point, thank you. That's a backup, because nothing's ever done till it's done in the government, but we're confident that eighteen hundred acres is going to come through. But this will ensure that TCAT will continue to plan and build a modern campus in our county. Do we have any other discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
I would like to add, I feel certain that this resolution will pass, but it would negate a prior resolution for the lot number one, and I would suggest that we bring that resolution number up to rescind at our next meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
The attorney, for everybody's benefit, the attorney says that the rescension of the previous resolution is worded in this current resolution, so by passing this one, we will also rescind our past one. Modify it. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion carries, thank you. And, and I'd like to add that the movement of this TCAT in no way negates anybody's past work on the TCAT in any way. We've had previous commissioners that worked very hard on that. It had, it had nothing to do with that. It's strictly to do with the fact that we have a new opportunity in this county that was unforeseen two years or three years ago, and this is just a better location for that TCAT, and that's as simple as that. Our next item is, let's discuss serving the county's rural residents with water service, and then we will vote on the Old Stone Fort Bridge preservation resolution. This is just a discussion item. Commissioner Morris, Morris first came in to me. I, I had received many requests for water service to rural areas at the end of various lines, whether they be War Trace, Hillsville, Manchester City, or West Warren, and I've had no clear direction on what I could tell those individuals about how we could help serve them. I've been told the county has a substantial amount of pipe that we've already purchased. I'm not sure how much it is, et cetera. Then Commissioner Morris came in and mentioned to me about Roberts Ridge Road, which was one that I'd heard quite a bit about. Just so happens yesterday, Hillsville called me with about six different locations in their service area that needed expansions. I think this body needs to have a clear directive, either through the committee process, and then to me, so I can tell people how to proceed forward with something like this. We don't have to have it done tonight at all, but we need to, while we're all together, I wanted to broach this subject and be wide open to any suggestions. We do know that potable water is, is just a mandatory function of our society. There are some wells going dry in some various areas, but at the same time, we have to remember that if we do for one, we may have to do for all. And so we need to have some way of, of proofing their request, getting some type of, whether it's the Department of Health, signs off and says this is a mandatory function or something. And I think we need to empower one of our committees to be the genesis, to begin talking about this, but it's something that we need to go ahead and, and start on, and so that's my preamble. I'd be glad to throw the ball to Commissioner Morris, if he'd like to add anything to it.
We've sort of run into walls. Certain entities will go so far and then go no further, and there's got to be ways to get more water to everybody in the county, in the rural part, and if, I guess what I'm looking for is you to think about, can, if Manchester City cannot serve North Coffee, or Hillsville cannot serve Hillsborough, and we find somebody else that can, can we move to them? Can we give them that area? Because there are lots of areas that are still not covered. And people are, their wells are running dry, they're not getting fire service, so I'm sort of asking everybody to think outside the box, and I don't know legally with Ed, but are there entities, or is the county broken up into parts for the water?
Excuse me, I can answer part of that, because I've seen the maps and I've talked to all the, the water districts. There's really no rhyme or reason. It's kind of been a horse race to get to the most people as fast as they could at some point in the past, and a lot of those, a lot of that has, has subsided. Most water systems probably with, and I don't mean this to slight anybody, but probably most water systems, with the exception of West Warren Viola, are no longer as aggressive into the rural areas as they used to be, but they are getting many requests. West Warren Viola, I know when I was in the legislature about twelve years ago, they were planning on an influx of people in North Coffee, and they were building the infrastructure for that. War Trace is, is pretty bad. Anybody that's on War Trace water has very poor water quality in some cases, and they have bad pressure. It's bad, it's terrible for fire protections, those types of things. Hillsville also has, they do a great job, but they have an antiquated facility. Now, we did, through our ARPA money, help them with tower improvements, which helped them with some pressures and things of that nature. Manchester City goes out from centric part of the city to some areas of the county, but then they stop, and I don't know the rhyme or the reason of why they stopped, but they do, and so some citizens have said, look, the water is a mile away from me, I'd like to bring it down, or it's six hundred yards from me, I'd like to bring it down. So what we would be discussing is how would we get water into a neighborhood or in front of a house, and it would be up to the individual then to go from the road to their house. But I think we need to find out how much this is going to cost. We need to come up with a litmus test of who actually needs it versus who wants it, and we need to find out what is, you know, how we're going to go about doing it. And so we're wide open to suggestions, whether it be planning commission in the future, whether it be capital outlay in the future, whether it be just budget and finance, whether we create a, I hate to create another committee of any kind, but maybe an ad hoc committee to study this and report back to us in ninety days or something. We've got some, some good folks on the Wayside Acres wastewater authority that, that know some things about this, and we can bring in folks from War Trace and Hillsville, and Manchester, and West Warren, and have them tell us their best suggestions. So all those things could be done, and I think we could probably get them all done and pulled together mostly in one work session, or maybe in the November meeting, which is our next scheduled meeting, it could be done immediately before that, so. But I'm wide open to, to any suggestions, but I think there's a want versus a need here, and obviously we want to meet the needs first. But I need a clear directive, and I think the county does too, as we continue to grow, and our population's going to really get much larger than any of us can, can probably perceive right now in the next seven or eight years. Yes, sir. Commissioner Hunt?
I know previously, we had like a working agreement with Hillsville, where if we bought materials, they would install it, do, will other water systems participate in something like that?
We will ask them, and you're correct about Hillsville, and he reaffirmed that yesterday, but he also said it's been so long since he can remember doing something like that, he didn't know if it was still the way we did things or not. So I think we need something that's, that's pretty universal, but yes, you're correct. We provided the materials and they put it in the ground and provided the water. If everybody is agreeable, I will put together the best, I will try to get all four utilities here, maybe for the November meeting, to discuss this with us. I'll also try to get an inventory of how much pipe we have, and just try to get some baseline information. If you would rather, we can have purchasing, or capital outlay, or somebody themselves do that and report back here in November. It does not matter to me, but I'd like to move the ball forward, so I'm open to suggestions. Looks like it's going to be me, which is fine, which is fine. I don't mind it a bit. This is a good education, and, and it's been frustrating getting parts and parcels of, of explanations, but if, if, if the commission is okay, then I'll work towards this and try to have as much information as I can. I will update you as I get information, and so hopefully in our November meeting, we'll be poised to take it to the next level. And we'll just take that on a nod deal, since this is a, just a discussion, but I'll be glad to do that.
How urgent is our need right now for that water?
On Roberts Ridge Road is pretty urgent. They have, they definitely have dry wells, probably with no more than a mile from, from where Manchester ends, and that has been urgent for four to six months at least, possibly a year, as far as I know. Hillsville, I don't know how urgent it is, but for them to call me and say they... Hillsville, I don't know how urgent it is, but for them to call me and say they had five or six, it's obviously becoming more urgent, and there's just more people accessing the groundwater, there's more things going on.
Do we need a work session in October to get this going and to make that happen a little quicker for these folks?
Let me make some initial phone calls, and if I can get some, if I can get enough answers to avoid bringing us all together, but get us to the next level, we'll do that. If not, I'll be glad to call a work session. I don't want to drive you guys crazy with work sessions at all. I think they're healthy, but we could also, you know, have them before our regular stated meeting also, so give me a few weeks to, for us to look at that, and we'll get back with you on it, but we'll do that part in earnest now. Move on to the next item, which is 11H, which is the Old Stone Fort Bridge Preservation Resolution, and if you don't mind, I would like to read that to the record. Let me get down here to it. Okay. Resolution 2023-19, Old Stone Fort Bridge Preservation Resolution. Whereas Coffee County Government is authorized to present this resolution for presentation to the state of Tennessee for its consideration, and based upon its passage, this resolution represents the wishes of Coffee County, Tennessee, and its citizens. And whereas the Old Stone Fort Bridge, located in Old Stone Fort State Park, is the same bridge historically identified as the Pratt Trust Bridge. The bridge has been utilized by the citizens of Coffee County and other citizens traversing the Duck River for many years, and is now for pedestrian traffic only in the Old Stone Fort State Park, and the bridge provides the only reasonable pedestrian access between campsite visitors and the Old Stone Fort State Park. The state park is utilized by persons nationwide, and whereas the citizens of Coffee County and this commission recognize the importance of preserving historic properties, and this structure is both historic and significant to this community. And whereas, removal of the Old Stone Fort Bridge located in Old Stone Fort State Park would be to the detriment of our state park and the Coffee County community. And whereas, this commission seeks to preserve historic and significant properties in this county, and whereas the state of Tennessee likewise seeks to preserve historic and significant properties for purposes of utility for its citizens and tourism to our great state, and removal of the bridge is contrary to the intention of the county and the state of Tennessee. And whereas, the state's costs associated with continued maintenance of this bridge are not significant considering the loss of the state, of the loss to the state of Tennessee and Coffee County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Coffee County Commission, this resolution should be forwarded and sent to the state of Tennessee and its representatives for consideration and other appropriate measures. The Old Stone Fort Bridge is located, located in the Old Stone Fort Park should not be removed. This resolution will take effect immediately upon passage. The public welfare demanding approved and so ordered. And the primary sponsors are Chairman Pro Tim Hunt and Commissioner D. Ford, who told me earlier that she had to be at work at 7:00, but she was a co-sponsor of it. And I would like to add that all those voting in the affirmative would be added as signatories on this on a separate sheet. That being said, we have a motion and a second on the resolution that I just read. Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
I would like to thank our county attorney for a well-crafted resolution that I think accurately presents our position. Also, I'd like to say that the mayor, our mayor uses a term wheelhouse a lot. This is one of these deals where this is definitely in my wheelhouse.
Yeah.
Because I know what's going to happen out there, step one. It would be probably the most ecologically invasive action taken in this county in several years. There's an existing bridge that we all know, everybody's been across it. It's a, the bridge proper, that I call it, is the Trust Bridge, which is a 100-foot-long pier-to-pier bridge that has two 80-foot approach spans on either end. To remove that old bridge, the very first move would be bringing in large cranes, my wheelhouse. They would have to bring in the cranes only on the side that is now the main park entrance. There would be many, many trees would have to be cut down. They would, the big crane, I have no idea what capacity it would take to sit at the abutment and reach to the center of that bridge, which would be 130-foot radius minimum. It would be huge. The weights that's involved would do damage to the state park highways. After the bridge is removed, you have four concrete piers that go into the riverbed, two concrete abutments that are near the bank. The proposed bridge will be 320 feet long total, as opposed to the existing 260 feet abutment to abutment. That means, once the concrete piers and abutments of the existing bridge are removed, they will have to excavate 30 foot back into the existing road beds on either side, more ecological damage to the property out there. The, the piers, I'm going to try to get through this as quick as I can, and I really hope everybody, I hope this is a unanimous vote. Nowhere in this resolution are we giving money or committing taxpayer dollars to anything. There's, there's just an opinion. The constituents of this county, I'd say by and large, support this resolution, and I hope this is a unanimous vote at the county level. Back to the concrete piers, after the existing bridge is removed, you're going to have to drive cofferdam steel into the riverbed to catch the debris. Somebody's going to be listening to an excavator hammering on concrete. And one point worth making, when that bridge is removed, no pedestrian traffic can make it to the park proper. That means all campers that want to go to the park are going to have to come back out to 41 Highway, make the circle, and come into the park entrance. These concrete piers and abutments that will have to be removed, like I said, would be jackhammers, excavators, hole rams. It's just a terribly invasive operation, and I expect it from start to finish with weather delays and what have you. This project could be at least two years long, and I can't, I just can't imagine anybody applying logic to this project. Tax dollars at the federal level and state level are involved in this. All of us pay federal tax dollars, all of us pay state tax dollars. None of our Coffee County tax dollars are involved in this project. So this is basically an opinion, and I hope all of us share the same opinion. And if anybody has any questions regarding this, I'd be glad to answer them.
You've heard the explanation of the sponsor. Are there any additional questions or comments, any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote on the resolution. All those in favor, signify by voting aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, next item, our reports from committees. And as you know, as we always do, everybody's minutes from their last meetings are in their packets. You can explain as much as you'd like to about your last meeting, or you can use parts and parcels, or you may simply ask members and the public to refer to the minutes in the packet. First, we have Budget and Finance. Chairman Seaborn.
Yeah, so our normal scheduled meeting for the third, fourth Thursday of the month, at the current moment, we don't have any agenda items, so it's probably a good chance we might cancel that meeting and just meet before, in the following month in October. I have nothing else.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Health, Welfare, and Recreation, Chairman Hollensworth.
This will be meeting September 26th at 6:00 PM. Commissioner Morris will be front and center on rural water. We'll also have Rural Fire there discussing issues that they have.
I'd like to add very quickly about the animal shelter and Commissioner Hodge, this may, we may end up with a special meeting in October. The Rice family from Telahoma has agreed to donate the three acres in the old fan property next to the jail for the animal shelter, has an appraised value of $290,000, and so we will need to take official action to accept that, and Barrister here is working on the proper paperwork for that. Sooner we can get it, the better, so that we can move on with some other aspects of that project. But I've traveled to about 11 different counties, and I know Commissioner Hollensworth's worked hard, and many others have, on trying to find a good location, and I believe we have the best location of anywhere there on Main Highway for awareness and future adoptions and things, so that's coming together. Law enforcement, they had no activity. Beer Board, Chairman Hunt. It's attached, nothing. Capital Outlay, Chairman Hunt?
I would like to report, it probably would be of some interest to individuals in the room that are, our, the Honorable Judge Bobby Carter and Eric Burks, right? They came before Capital Outlay wanting to perform extensive work around the old courthouse, just try to give it a facelift, a yard, do a bunch of stuff. So we did address that, they're working on it, and I think we'll get that going.
I think there'll be something positive there, too. Yes, sir. Policies and Procedures, Chairman Hirschman.
I'll refer to our minutes on our packet, and we are, our next meeting is on the 18th of September at 5:00.
Yes, sir. Industrial Board, I spoke to Chairman Steven Crook today. He is off at a recruitment, trying to recruit some businesses for this county today. He just wanted to make sure that our TCAT resolution was moving forward, so MDS would have an opportunity for their expansions, and I told him I thought it would go through, and I'll call him later tonight, tell them that it was successful. Strategic Planning, Chairman Seaborn.
The Strategic Planning Committee is working pretty hard on a draft, a draft document right now with strategic plan. We hope to present the results of that at the very next meeting, so hopefully we can carve out a little time in our meeting to make a presentation on that, and we will be distributing a pre, a read-ahead version of that draft before that meeting.
Absolutely, and once again, this will help this commission identify goals and opportunities that we need collectively to pursue for the betterment of Coffee County. So they've been working hard for about two years now, year and a half. Long time. Thank you for all that work. Planning Commission, Chairman Hunt?
Deferder minutes, please.
Deferder minutes. BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals, Chairman Hunt?
Interesting business takes place at the Board of Zoning Appeals at, everyone's familiar with Lakewood Park, I think. It's like posted stamp parcels out there that we, there was an individual come in, I think he owned, in our zoning resolution, if you own two parcels that do not meet requirements, but they are contiguous, you must combine them for approval for residential structures. And there's an individual came to us with that scenario, and he was asking for like a nine-foot variance, where we have 25-foot side yards and backyards, but he did not have his septic approval, and people do not realize septic approval is based upon the number of bedrooms that a house has, not the number of bathrooms. So he had not obtained his septic permit, so he had no idea how big a house he could build, so we deferred a decision on that because he might not need the nine foot, and he might need 20 feet, who knows? But I just thought that'd be interesting for you guys.
I'd just like to add, while we're all together, you know, there's issues in this county that we're approaching, you know, like eating an apple one bite at a time, this water issue, one of them, Lakewood Park's going to be another one. The trustees have done actually a really good job over the past few years in cleaning that up. If you haven't been in there for quite some time, you might want to ask for a tour, but it still has some challenges, from codes and zoning, safety roads, all those types of things. And it goes back to the same thing like our water. Once we start adopting some things, we may not be able to finish it. So we've got to be very careful about how we help them in the future, but that is a nice piece of property potentially, and as this county continues to grow and mature, I think we're going to have to pay more attention to helping Lakewood Park bring up their codes and bring up their, bring up their aesthetics out there, but it is first going to be incumbent upon them being a private gated community with a board of directors. So we are in negotiations with them. I just want to throw that out there, that that's something that is coming down the pipe one day. Purchasing and Property Sales Committee, Commissioner Hollensworth.
Yes, we'll be meeting Thursday, September 21st. We've had a busy month. We've seen the MDS Foods, new construction going through, and the folks are going to hire 80 new people at $20 plus an hour. We've worked through that. We're also going to be discussing the sale of property on Oakdale Street. Pretty much does it. Secretary Watkins, you have anything to add on surplus?
No, sir.
Thank you. Ambulance Authority, Chairman Stubblefield?
Okay, I have nothing to report this time. We do have a meeting at 9:21.
9:21, yes, sir. Joint Economic and Community Development Board met on 8/16. You can see their attachment, and their next meeting is 11/15. Investment Committee had no activity. Solid Waste Board, Chairman Pro Tim Hunt?
Thank you. The Solid Waste Board dealt with mostly routine stuff, but there is one thing worth noting, and I want everybody to listen to this, construction debris from new house construction does not go to our convenience centers. That's sort of been a little issue, like truckloads, dump truck, dump trailers behind pickups. Those should go to the transfer station behind our jail, and I think there's even a waste facility on, towards Estle Springs out of Telahoma that will take it. So please make your neighbors and yourselves aware of that.
And it's worth noting, the transfer station takes household waste, they also take construction debris, and limbs, woods, wood, leaves, those types of things also, if you need that. Legislative Committee Meeting, Commissioner Morris?
We probably will not have a joint meeting this time, and we're scheduled to meet on the September 25th. Between Policies and Procedures and our committee, we'll work on refining the employee evaluation form.
Thank you, sir. Rural Roads and Bridges, no attachment. Their last meeting was September 6th. IT Committee had no activity. 911 Board, Commissioner Stubblefield?
You can look at the minutes on that. We have a meeting October 18th.
October 18th, thank you. Audit Committee, no activity. EMA Homeland Security, we actually had a meeting today in Shelbyville. I chair that six-county region. The way that's broken up is the county with the largest population is the chairman, and we just kind of had some perfunctory business about, the federal government gives the six counties $130,000 a year, and we have to figure out how to spend that, and also have a mechanism in place to accept more monies in the event of a major disaster. We just retooled all those things today and came up with a way that instead of all six counties dividing the 130 and getting almost nothing done, that we're going to, two counties at a time, once a year, we each receive 65,000, and Coffee County was just in the last round, so it'll be two years again before we get that 65, but each of the two counties, each of the, from the six counties, two of them each will get 65 a year, and it'll just continue to rotate. If at any time more than 150,000 comes down from the federal government, then we'll have an automatic, it'll trigger an automatic meeting to decide how to spend those excess funds. And that was today, and we had Manchester Fire. And that was today and we had Manchester Fire and our EMA director was there also. Wayside Wastewater Authority had no activity. Library Board, their next meeting is on, or their last meeting was on 7/11, you can look at their meetings. Election Commission had no activity. County Board of Equalization, no activity. Coffee County Highway Commission met on 7/5 and 8/2, they have no attachment here. If you ever want to go to one of those meetings, they are properly stated and they hold them right out here in the lobby, very easy to find. Next, we go to item number 13, which is Statements and Announcements. First is our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November the 14th, 2023. And do we have any other statements or announcements? Commissioner Morse?
Just like to let everybody know, we have another honor flight, the 27th of this month. We do have one World War II vet, there's only about 100,000 out of 16 million remaining. But this veteran's 97 and he's still walking and living at home by himself. So we have World War II, some Korean War vets and disabled Vietnam vets on this flight. It's a one-day up to Washington DC and back, fantastic experience for the vets.
It is a fantastic experience. I encourage everybody to be willing to donate some money to sponsor a vet or go to help chaperone a vet. And you leave about three or four in the morning and you'll be back by about midnight or 1:00 AM, but it is a very enriching day. Also like to say that we did, we had a special work session about a week and a half ago on our insurance, and I am working now to get us some solid numbers on what the new plan is likely to cost, along with the build out of the clinic and how that would all go. Once we get those solid numbers, then we'll begin that through the committee process for deliberation that moving forward to this full body. Do we have any, yes, Commissioner Brown?
Since I've become a commissioner and I'm on the county of budget and finance, I've noticed that anytime somebody asks for money, we're too eager to give away taxpayers' money. Just like the 250 for the child safety or baby safety, I mean, that's a good charity, but we lean on the county too much to take the taxpayers' dollars. Given the commissioners still struggling about some charity, I think we should take it on ourselves, donate our own money, and then maybe we pass some of the county's money so easily. And a friend of mine once told me, if you've got a hole in your bucket of this to go down, we've got to start watching charities, the money we get away because everybody's going to come ask.
I agree, but someone also told me once that there's a lot of people less fortunate than us, and we have to take those things into consideration also.
I understand that.
Yes. I, I understand that too. There's a, there's, there's a, there's a way to balance that, but both are true. Both are true. Commissioner Hunt?
Connie, do you have the resolution for the bridge, the bridge resolution? Please everyone stop by the table and sign that resolution if you would. I really think all of our names need to be on it and it'll carry just a little more weight.
It does. The state likes to see a minimum of two-thirds pass a resolution, a unanimous resolution will get great attention. I would appreciate it also if everybody just stopped by there and signed your name. Let's get them, get them all on there and... That's okay, no, it's not, because we discussed that. We wanted to make sure, we didn't know how many signatures, we, I didn't want blank signature lines on a form we send in, so we wanted to wait and see how many and then we, we take care of it. So it's all good. It's all good, thank you. Before we close, Barrister North, do you have anything further?
Just thinking about the bridge.
All right. Mr. Parliamentarian, are we zipped up tight?
We are zipped up tight, yay.
Seeing no further business, can I entertain a motion to adjourn? So moved, we are adjourned.